Well, there's no need for me to be overly redundant. I agree with most everything I've heard. I would like to see the turf over there at the MEK get to rest at least one day a week, maybe two, but I think you all said that Fridays is a day that there seems to never be anything going on.
We've hardly ever had field use on Friday.
I'd like, you know, I'd like to say that we make it a plan, a policy, to not let anybody use it on Fridays going forward, for sure, and maybe another day, but Fridays for sure. You know, our drought is not anywhere near over with. It's going to be tough to maintain a real good plain surface out there. Other than that, though, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Roberts?
I pretty much concur with Mr. Mahoney. For whatever reason, Friday's just not a used day. I don't know, football games, who knows? But it'd be a great day if they're not using them to allow that to be a rest day. I remember when I came to City Hall and you took me out back, and we did have a lot of rain the first part of this year, and it was very moist, but those fields were, they were just crying. And it was, they, we had to rest them or we were going to lose them. And unfortunately, it's not a synthetic surface. We can't use them over and over and over. They do have to have a regeneration period, so. And it's, as Mark said, it's not just for one, one team or one organization. It's, that's, that's for the whole city, and it needs to be shared equitably.
Thank you, Randy. Katie, do you have your motion?
Yes. And so, the discussion action is for the rental policy. So, are we on which one?
Aye. Aye.
What is even? Oh, Sybalo Community Center. I was looking at the wrong one. Okay.
Nai nai.
Okay, my note, I'll still read my notes. So, I recommend, I make a motion to approve the use of the MEK four days a week with an increase in that number at the discretion of staff, but not to exceed six days a week. Have to have one day to rest. If someone who has booked, like if relentless books Monday, Wednesdays, and they have to cancel due to weather, then they can move practice to a different day that week if it's available. So, if they cancel practice on Monday, they can go on Thursday if Thursday's not taken. And then also, I, do I need to, Mr. Santy, do I need to do a separate motion if I'm recommending specific teams? Would it be better to do a separate one?
Yeah, it really is because you don't want to have a compound motion.
Got it.
So, if you, if we need to have three or four or five motions, it's perfectly fine, break these things down one at a time so staff and the record reflects everyone's vote on each one of these things.
Okay. So, then my motion is four days a week at discretion of staff, up to six days, but no more than six days a week to rent it. And then also, if a team has to cancel due to weather and there's another day available that week, then they're able to move it to that day.
Okay. So, we got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham and a second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote on your screens, council members. Do you have another one too, Katie?
I make a motion to approve the use of the MEK for relentless soccer on Mondays and Wednesdays and one weekend a month.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Katie Cunningham to allow relentless to use it Monday, Wednesdays, and then one weekend per month, one weekend day per month. We have a second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Katie has one more.
I make a motion to allow use of the MEK by the Firebirds team one weekend a month.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Hicks. I mean, really, anybody can start using it in those other days, but you're just getting that started, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then...
Was there another team?
No, not another team, but...
Just say yes. Okay. So, we have six to zero.
Weird. I would also like to add, I don't know if it needs to be a motion, but I would like staff to work with relentless, and if there are weekends that are available outside of that, they are guaranteed one weekend with our motion. If there are other weekends available, I would like them to use it. I know that they do have Saturdays and Sundays, and so maybe the weekend that the football team is using it on a Saturday, they could use it on a Sunday or, or something like that. But come up with something, because I would, I know that they've used it every weekend with the exception of the city event weekends, and they've done a really good job. We do want to open it up to other teams and get, give other teams a chance, but they have been with us a very long time, and I want to make sure that we're, we're working with them. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, working to find us a longer, because I'm sure as they grow, they're going to want more days too. Two days a week, they're going to have practice for like six hours trying to fit everyone in. So, finding a space that's a longer-term solution moving forward would be fantastic.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I know that every one of the parents and the kids out there will, are going to appreciate it also. So, thank you very much.
All right, great. All right. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to item number 8A, and this is one that Peggy had notified me prior to the start of the meeting, that we're going to jump into executive session and talk to our attorney over this item before we come back out to deliberate the agenda item and vote on it. The time is 7:48 PM. We are going to break into executive session. The council will meet in an executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. Like I said, the time is 7:48. We'll break in executive session. All right, the time is 8:05 PM. We are going to resume from executive session and segue into the agenda item 8A, which is the discussion action to approve the regional wastewater treatment contract between the Sybalo Creek Municipal Authority, CCMA, and the City of Sybalo regarding the expansion project to the south wastewater treatment plant and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Mr. Reed?
Thank you. Mayor and members of city council, the purpose of this presentation is to help city council to focus on the future growth that is forecasted in the future Sybalo wastewater certificate of convenience and necessity, or service area. And we have those attachments to your staff report. The city council has continued to take steps towards controlling its destiny with future growth in the southern area of the city limits, as evidenced by the significant milestones that I included in your cover sheet, which I will not repeat for time purposes, but it is on the published cover sheet. Tonight, we'll discuss this agreement, and you'll take, under consideration, a motion to approve this agreement to participate in the expansion to the CCMA South Plant, consistent with the information provided in this presentation and packet. The city council is being asked to move forward to approve the contract, or if you have questions and need more time, continue this item to September 23rd. At the May 13th city council meeting, the direction to the city manager was to negotiate an agreement for the City of Sybalo to participate in a 2.5 million gallons per day expansion to the existing .5 million gallons a day treatment plant, recognizing that the City of Shertz was negotiating with CCMA for a portion of this expansion. So, we, the City of Sybalo, will receive the eight living units equivalents. You can consider that a single-family home, so that it can accommodate the flows requirements plus the city's obligation to GV Sud under the comprehensive settlement agreement. And at the May 13th, we also gave you estimated costs for the 2.5 MGD expansion. The total would be 86.25 million. Sybalo's share of the cost would be 45% of the capacity, which would be roughly 33.75 million, and these are just estimated costs at this time, because this has not gone out for construction bidding. So, the schedule for this project is, the design will begin sometime in October of this year and would be about 18 months long. That would be through about April of 2027. We expect the project to go to bid in 2027, construction to start in the second half of '27 and be completed sometime by the late 2029, but it could be the first quarter of 2030. So, the design proposal, I'll just move to fiscal impact. Again, the City of Sybalo's share of the cost is estimated to be 45% of the capacity, and that's roughly 33.75 million. The City of Sybalo's pro rata cost for the design cost of the expansion is as follows. The design proposal cost came in lower than what was presented to the city council earlier this summer. Actual cost for design will be $8,384,165. That's down from the 11.25 estimate that we had at the time. CCMA will issue 8.5 million bond to provide some contingency. This represents an 11.3% of the estimated construction cost, 75 million. Sybalo's portion of the design will be 3.825 million. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone on council have any questions?
I make a motion to approve the regional water, wastewater treatment contract between Sybalo Creek Municipal Authority, CCMA, and the City of Sybalo regarding the expansion project of the south wastewater treatment plant and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens. Please vote. Notion carries six to zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. All right, we're going to jump over to an item, which is 8G, discussion action and approval of a contract for engineering and architectural design services for the animal shelter pursuant to RFQ 25-574-14 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Brian Huggins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick recap of how we got here. The citizens of Sybalo approved a bond proposition at the November 2024 election to approve the construction of a new animal shelter for the City of Sybalo. In the spring of 2025, we did an RFQ for responsive architectural firms who are, you know, design, are, design and, and build animal service facilities. So, we had five responsive qualifications that came in on that. So we had five responsive qualifications came in on that. We narrowed the top three down, the top three finalists, interviewed those firms, and came up with Quorum Architects to be the one that we, the preferred vendor on this architectural service and design. At the June tenth twenty twenty five city council meeting, you approved the city manager's office to negotiate a contract with Quorum Architects, which we have done, and so tonight we're bringing this back for approval of the actual contract itself. We have representatives from Quorum Architects here tonight. If you'd like to ask any questions of them about the contract, but we put that in your packet, so for you to review the contract prior to tonight's meeting, and tonight we're asking for approval of that so we can move forward with the agreement and get started on the design of our new animal shelter.
Very good. All right. Does anybody have any questions for the architect? If not, Katie has a motion.
I make a motion to approve eight G.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote. Notion carries, six zero. We look forward to seeing those artist renderings.
So do we.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. C and T, the agenda item didn't list the contractor, but the background of the item did. So when I said eight G, do I need to specify the contractor? Okay.
Thank you. Yep, okay. Next up is item eight B. Discussion action and approval of an interlocal agreement between the city and Green Valley Special Utility District, G V S U D. Mrs. Miranda.
Thank you, mayor and council. Texas Water Code thirteen point one four seven provides for consolidated billing and collection contracts for public utility providers, and Texas Water Code thirteen point two five provides for discontinuance of service for specific circumstances. As you know, the City of Sibyllo's wastewater C C N and Green Valley S U D's water C C N overlap. Each entity currently bills and collects payments for their specific services separately. There is an existing agreement between the city and G V S U D which provides for interruption of water service to G V S U D customers for non-payment of wastewater charges to the city. We're looking at updating that agreement and formalizing it as an interlocal agreement. Currently, our disconnect dates for the city and G V S U D don't always align, and it's been difficult to provide adequate notice of disconnection to our shared customers. It's also a challenge to manually calculate winter average wastewater charges for these same customers. And as you know, the growth in this customer base for wastewater customers for the City of Sibyllo has grown from approximately twenty four hundred accounts in twenty fourteen to approximately five thousand accounts now. To mitigate the challenges and streamline our processes, G V S U D general manager initiated communication with our city manager to offer a potential solution. City staff met with G V S U D staff and developed a process that is outlined in the attached interlocal agreement. The agreement provides for consolidated billing and collection of our shared accounts through G V S U D at no cost to the city. Disconnection notices, costs, and fees will be processed by G V S U D, and G V S U D will remit collections along with a monthly report to the city for wastewater charges. Winter average calculations will be processed by Green Valley, eliminating manual processes which can be prone to error. Other benefits to our shared customers include elimination of setting up service at two different locations and consistency in disconnection processes. Customers will continue to get a separate bill from the city for solid waste services, but the information will be collected for us by G V S U D. G V S U D will retain penalty and disconnect fees. Staff recommends approval of this in her local agreement as written, and I'm open for any questions that city council might have.
When will the first bills go out? They'll have this.
Potentially, if approved this evening, we would want to make it effective October first. And so their first billing cycle after October first, which I believe is middle of the month, would include the fees.
Yeah, usually my bills due on the tenth for them, so maybe November tenth?
November tenth.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do. I have a question. Since we're doing this for the purpose of efficiency, right, and then consolidating, would, could we have written in here, and I don't know, but the flow, the backflow, since we're sending out notices to G V Sud customers, wouldn't it be ideal also to include that in here so that they can also maintain that just as well and make it one thing, because then it's not efficient if we're still holding on to that one item, and they can probably do both?
We don't handle backflow in the utility billing office, so I'm not familiar with the process. I'm not sure if, if either the city manager or Mr. Gomez could provide clarification on the backflow program.
Ms. Sanchez Stevens, you bring up a good point, and I think previously that our Assistant Public Works Director, Jacob Parsons, was actually still needing to come back to council to finalize how we were to structure the backflow program, and so with our transition, that has been put on the back burner at best. How about we bring that back in the next month or so, late October, with one of our new Assistant Public Works Directors, and pick that back up and try to resolve or define how we move forward with our backflow prevention annual testing.
I believe some residents are already receiving notifications from the city, and they're getting a little bit confused because they're putting on there when the last date was their last backflow inspection. And so the thing is, is a particular resident said, I was about to throw this away, because I don't get my water from the city. I get my water from G V Sud. So I opened it up, and so, so when it comes to the backflows, that way it's more efficient. That way, there's no miscommunication. If, if we're not handling things for our G V Sud customer, or we're transferring it over, I think it would be good to also include that to make it more efficient.
We can talk to G V Sud about the backflow prevention notices. That's what you're talking about. And you're right, the city should be sending notices only to customers that are our water utility customers. G V Sud sends notices to their customers. We should not be sending a notice, even if the resident lives in the city, if they're a G V Sud water customer. That.
They should not be getting.
I'm a little concerned that they're getting a notice.
I've gotten one, and I'm a G V S U D water customer.
You got one from the city?
From the city.
The backflow, yes. I've got them twice so far.
If you, if either one, both of you could just send me like what address that was, or something to that effect, well, sir, I can get your address, so. Ms. Sanchez Stevens, I would love to reach out to the resident. When I say I, the staff would love to reach out to the resident who received that notice and assure them that they're a G V Sud customer, and they should not have received that from the city. We need to come back to you. Apparently, there's an issue even with the notices we're sending out.
Okay, so, so yeah, I agree. We should punt that over to G V S U D, but we'll bring that back in a separate item.
Correct, and my commitment is, we will have that conversation with G V Sud. If there's an efficiency to send notices out through them, I'm sure that they would offer to do that. So I'm not saying we won't do that, but until I can figure out what's going on, I, I feel best by making that a separate issue.
Yep.
And I saw Mr. Gomez write something down over there. As I said, we would bring this back in late October.
Okay.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact the billing process.
Any other questions from council? Got a motion?
I make a motion to approve eight B.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries, five one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is eight C. Discussion action to approve amendment number ten to, I'm sorry, of an I L A between the City of Sibyllo and the Alamo Area Council of Governments, A C O G, for demand response route in the amount of eight thousand one hundred dollars for services rendered in F Y twenty five and an additional five thousand seven hundred for services rendered in F Y twenty two, and authorize the city manager to execute the I L A. Mr. Reed.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we also have Sean Scott. He's the senior director at the Alamo Area Council of Governments, A C O G, and he has been the representative for A C O G since I've been here. That, when we've had a presentation, he's been here. So I appreciate him making time to be here tonight. The cover sheet makes this real clear. The I L A for this fiscal year just never got across the finish line, and so he's here to talk about that. But over the last few months, there's been some communication that there was not a payment to A C O G for F Y twenty two. I told them that administratively, I can't pay for something that's two, three fiscal years old, but I was happy to include it in this I L A, and if council approved the I L A with that provision, then finance would run a payment for F Y twenty two, and F Y twenty two was a fifty seven hundred dollar payment. Then, on the back of that, we are working with Sean and his staff to make sure that we have the I L A for F Y twenty six already in place. And so those are the two items that you're, to make a motion on tonight. Before you do that, I want to turn this over to Sean Scott, who will give you a presentation on some of the benefits of our current system here.
Thanks very much. Good evening. My name's Sean Scott. I'm the senior director at Alamo Area Council of Governments. Alamo Regional Transit is one of the programs that are under my supervision and guidance. So Alamo Regional Transit provides public transportation in eleven rural counties, and that includes Guadalupe County, but it does exclude the cities of Sibyllo and Shirts. Little history on that. The reason it excludes Sibyllo and Shirts is because the twenty twelve census redesignation, and Sibyllo and Shirts got moved into the San Antonio U Z A, so that kind of put us out of the deal. So Via Metro is actually the service provider out here. So in order to get service out here, Via and A C O G and the City of Sibyllo all came together and made an agreement to, to provide a level of public transportation service, and that's where we're at right now. I'm here tonight. I'm just going to go over a little bit of stats that we have for you real quick, and Mr. Reed commented that I've been here the whole time, and actually, I left for two years and went to Germany and lived there, and so that's, that's the fifty seven hundred, so I apologize for that one, too. But just came back on that when we had an audit come through, and that's where this came up, and we got caught on that. So, real quick, just talk about a little bit about ridership of what goes on with Alamo Regional Transit. We provide three different levels of service here in, in Sibyllo. We have a demand response service, which is, you call in at least twenty four hours in advance. I will tell you that the service is full. There's no capacity left on it right now. We have a route system that runs in, in the area that runs one day a week for about five hours a week. We call it the El Surino Route, and then we also do shuttle service for y'all during Sibyllo Fest, and that's all included in the, the I L A agreement we have. So the trips you see right here, this is twenty twenty four. I just, I wanted to go all the way back there. You can kind of see the ridership. Alamo Regional Transit did a little over a hundred and forty five thousand trips. Between the Sibyllo Demand Response and the El Surino Route, it came to about two percent of our routes. I went ahead and pulled up some stats for the twenty twenty five of January through July. You'll see that we're pretty much on track. We're, the Alamo Regional Transit is kind of stagnant, a little bit of growth this year so far. But you can see the, between Sibyllo and the El Surino Route, we're still staying at about two percent, so it kind of rings true and kind of what we expect on that. Something that was brought to us was that there was a concern that people weren't able to get through on the phone lines and stuff. We did have an inadequate phone system that wasn't made to handle the call center volume that we were receiving, so we did get that changed. You could see the calls we get, when it says calls from citizens of Sibyllo, those are people that we have their phone number in our, in the system, because there, there's just so many variables in there. That's, I wanted to give you all the most accurate numbers I could. So these are people that I know live there and use, use the service in Sibyllo. So when you look at the short abandoned, that's people that didn't even enter the queue. They just called up and they didn't want, for some reason, to, to even enter into high on Alamo Regional Transit. Then, so that leaves us about ninety one hundred calls. Of course, this is twenty twenty four communications again, so let me do that. Handled calls are the calls that actually made it through the queue, and they talked to somebody and got some kind of resolution. Abandoned calls are called, I'll stop right there. Is there any questions on that? Because I know that, I, I get so crossways with phone calls. I got too many definitions. I mean, there's another forty seven different categories that we can look at, and these were the simplest that I could come up with, that I could follow. Move on real quick. Just the financials, to jump into that real quick. Alamo Regional Transit, our cost per trip is around fifty seven dollars. Y'all's contribution per year is around eighty one hundred, and so Via matches that at eighty one hundred dollars also. So you can see that the reimbursement we receive between Y'all and Via is, you know, around four dollars and fifty cents. And so you can see we're at a deficit of about fifty two dollars and sixty one cents per trip. We make up that deficit through contracts that we have through A G and through Veterans Association and Medicaid contracts and everything like that. That's how, that's how we make that up, so I, I just want y'all to see that there, there's a big variance there, and that we have a huge, there's a, there's a big potential for next July that we're going to lose that veterans contract. So, so we, we may be running into an issue there on some of the transportation, but we will come back to you if we need to on that. The next, the, the only thing really I have left is that the resources, the, the funding that we have and the resources that we have, that, we've got them pretty maxed out. So we're doing, I think we're doing a great job with our rides per hour, that kind of transit stats and stuff like that. But I know the demand's much higher than what we serve. We just don't serve it right now, and so I wanted to make you aware that there is more demand out there that's not being served, and that in order to serve that, it would cost more money. And that's where I'll, I'll go to the next field, and I'll say, in twenty twenty seven, if we wanted to start talking about something to move forward, if you wanted me, I will go to Via, because Via controls all the federal funding in the area. And I can see, I could see if we can do something, if we can expand some of the route systems, just anything like that. And that kind of closes me out. Is there any questions I can answer for you on any of this?
Okay, so of all these trips, is there maybe a top five destinations where all these people are driving or are going? Where are they going?
Most of them are going to dialysis, I will tell you that. Many of them are going to Senior, trying to remember the Senior Center. I don't have the address in the Y M C A.
Senior Center? There was Senior Center, the Y M C A, and then the dialysis are the top three?
I would say that's the top three, and then you also have Walmart and A T B.
Okay, so dialysis, grocery shopping, and then to the Senior Center. Okay. And now, is there any opportunity to maybe talk to this dialysis center where a lot of these folks are going and see if maybe they could help pick up the slack? Because Y'all are basically bringing them customers on a regular basis, and so that might be an opportunity to, you know, because like you said, you're losing fifty bucks, you know, per trip, so maybe that might be an opportunity for y'all to reach out and see if they, they can help pay for some of this.
You are spot on. You could come work in transit, because we've been working on this with, you know, Ferenius and Davita and everything like that. I've probably been working with them for ten to twelve years, trying to get anything, and this is statewide, and they, they've held their ground very well. They feel, they feel like it's, it's insurance, it's an insurance issue.
Okay, yeah, because I'd imagine that maybe the grocery stores might, you know, as a faith of goodwill, you know, kick in a little bit, but, but yeah. Go ahead, Katie.
So I noticed provision one to add section, to section three point one is subsection E. It says one Saturday per year that coincides with Sibyllo Fest, A C O G will provide twenty four revenue hours. What is revenue hours?
Revenue hours is the time that somebody gets on that bus, and they, the service starts, and then the last person to get off. So, so if we sat there and, and we lined up buses at, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, and no one got on till ten o'clock, and then they rode from ten to noon, you would get charged two revenue hours.
That makes sense. And this might be more, I don't know if it's. And this might be more, I don't know if it's a question for you or for the city. I heard Mr. Reed mention that the FY26 Amendment is in progress, which I'm glad to hear that. FY26 starts in three weeks. So my concern is, is we are executing a contract amendment for the fiscal year that ends in three weeks. And we don't have, like, this should be the time we're executing the one for FY26. So I want to know when we're going to get that. And then secondly, why wasn't it not just lumped in as an additional bullet point in this amendment? Because now it's going to have to be put on another agenda and brought back.
It's the second, it's the next agenda item down is the FY26?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
How did I miss that? Never mind.
But you're, I mean, you're right on the 25 that this was.
I'm looking at the wrong items all day. Never mind, excuse that.
But the 25 was on our part. I mean, we, we've talked and we were checking this out. And then I don't know if it's the amount or, because normally ILAs, our ILAs aren't in that category because these categories are approved at a smaller threshold. And so I think that it got classified into a contract situation and we didn't pick up on it in the accrual.
Okay, perfect.
And that's, I don't have, there's not a good answer. How's that?
No, I'm glad to see that it's on here. I just totally missed that. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, this one is C, correct?
Eight, eight C.
Eight C.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Hicks. Please vote. Motion carries six, zero. Do you want to go ahead and do D, too, Katie?
Sure. I make a motion to approve eight D.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Hicks.
I do see y'all a lot in my neighborhood. There's at least two people in my neighborhood who use you once a week. We don't have public transportation in Cibolo. And so this is a great service that we are able to contribute towards to provide in our area.
I would love to see this expand, especially the El Surino Route. I mean, if we could partner up with Shirts maybe and everything and take something there. Thank you all very much and you have a good evening.
Appreciate you coming. Appreciate you providing this service to our citizens. All right, next up is item number E, approval, I'm sorry, discussion action on the approval of the Cibolo Community Center Rental Policy. Mr. Howard. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to table this one. My bad. Can I get a motion to table?
Make a motion to table the.
Okay, got a motion to table by Councilwoman Roberts, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote. Okay, tabled six, zero. Okay, we're going to move on to eight F, Discussion on the FY26 Budget. Mr. Reed and Ms. Miranda.
Mayor and council members, tonight we're seeking your direction on any final tweaks that you'd like to make to the FY26 budget. Previously, you have been discussing additional funding for the senior program coordinator, which would be through an agreement with Selrico. You've also had conversations about the council budget. And those are just two examples. Is there something else there, Ms. Miranda?
We did make, we did make the change that was discussed at the August meeting for the grants consultant to instead be dedicated $50,000 to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. That change has been made. So we were in process of the items that Mr. Reed just mentioned.
And your direction tonight will be the final changes to the budget. These changes will be made in part of what is posted for the September 18th council meeting at which you consider the tax rate and the budget.
Okay, do we have any questions on these items? Katie, go ahead.
So I had one question. I had, Ms. Roberts had asked a question about the Tri-County Chamber at one of our meetings not too far ago about the cost. And I went looking at their rates and looking at what they provide and all of that because to be perfectly fair, I have not participated in a lot of their events. I've gone to a couple of the mixers and a couple of the ribbon cuttings or whatever, but not as much as someone who knows about their services. Online, I found that they have different rate categories. And the lowest rate that we could pay as a city is $650. But I recall from our meeting that we were paying like $6,000 or $10,000 or something considerably higher than the $650. So I was just wondering if there was a reason why we're paying for one of the premier memberships rather than just the base city membership?
Ms. Cunningham, my recollection is it was about four years ago, say three and a half years ago, in which council, in a budget process, said, we're a member of the chamber and we're making an annual payment. And I think at the time it was around $5,000. Our payment today, I think, still remains about that. And so council moved to become a member of the Tri-County Chamber and offer, not offer, but have the same annual membership amount. That was the one time council debated it. And then every year thereafter, we show you that you're making those payments. And this is the first year that you've brought it back up. So fully your policy decision on it. I would say this, that there's been some change at the Tri-County Chamber. This might be a good time for me to reach out to the new chamber president and say that my council is concerned about the lack of a presence at the council meetings or in the community. And just ask her to come and give a presentation to the council. And it would be a good chance for her to commit what the Tri-County Chamber would do that's a benefit to the city.
I think that'd be great and appropriate for that to happen. I've also heard from some business owners that they're charging, they're charged $150 to do ribbon cutting with Tri-County. Whereas with the chamber, they're not charged that fee. And so I know that that's kind of difficult for some newer businesses that are already stretched thin with trying to get up and running. And so I was kind of, I'm curious about what, I know that they've had a change up. I'm excited to see where they're going moving forward, but I'd like to see what the benefit is to the city because if you compare the two, they're two similar organizations. If we're paying the same amount for both, I would expect to see similar results. And as to date, I haven't seen that. It's not saying that Tri-County isn't doing anything. I just am not seeing the same level for the same amount of money. And if we're really thin on cash, we do want to support businesses. But I want to make sure that the money that we're using to support businesses is actually going towards something that's going to have deliverables for us.
Again, totally council's decision on what you do concerning these memberships, yes.
Councilman Mahoney?
Well, I want to suggest that being a good steward of our taxpayers' money, that it. Well, just a question, did anybody go to the Tri-County's luncheon today? You know? Was there any, any time that they have been here to visit us for any reason? I guess what I'm saying is it's time, I think, to drop them cold turkey right now. For a year, we'll take a break from being a part of that to save our taxpayers some money. In the meantime, if there is community interest, if there's a few businesses around here that want to participate in that, then we reconsider that for next year.
Joel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I concur with that. I didn't realize, Ms. Cunningham, that not only are we paying them $5,500, $6,000 a year and then for, if a city business, city of Cibolo business wants, and I've heard this, you're not the first one that mentioned this to me. But if they're charging them $150 to do a ribbon cutting, you know, they should be, if they're the chamber, they should be doing that out of, you know, part of that $6,000 that we give them. But I'm with Mr. Mahoney. We cut ties right now, you know, let them come back and work with us. But, you know, why are we, what are we getting out of this $6,000? I know that we get a golf tournament team. But, you know, for the past few years, we would pay for that out of our funds. And yet we were supposed to have a free team and they never noted, notified us. So, I mean, I'm with you. I mean, you know, we were still paying even though with our membership that we were paying, we got a free, a free golf tournament out of it. And we, yet we were still paying. They didn't come up and say, hey, y'all don't have to pay it because that's part of your membership. So I'm with you, Mr. Mahoney. We cut ties right now, let them come back. But I think it's a, it's, it's not good for our citizens if they see that, you know, somebody's wanting to open a business and they go to the chamber, they say, oh, yeah, we'll do ribbon cutting. But then Tri-County wants to charge them $150. What is our $6,000 going to in that chamber? So I'm with you, Mr. Mahoney.
I would like to, oh, I'm sorry.
Donna, go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to say, I actually did get a phone call from Becky with Tri-County after I made my, my little discussion, I think. And she did ask me what it was about the Tri-County that I personally did not agree with. And I did express it and one of my things was, we don't see them. There, there's no benefit that our city is receiving at this particular moment in time from their, from their chamber. They are in a rebuilding mode, but that rebuilding mode doesn't necessarily have to be at the expense of the city of Cibolo businesses. So.
I just want to make one correction real quick. The fee is $5,250 for both the chamber and the Tri-County. I just asked the city secretary, emailed her on that. But, no, they're both. The city secretary emailed me the prices on both. But I also wanted to concur in that, in that the, oh, I just lost my train of thought. But I always just want to concur with everyone else. I'm just going to keep it short. I haven't really seen the participation. I think I mentioned this before, that the chamber usually, even today, she came forward and also gave some kudos to our city staff for helping them with some planning things. And she's quite active. And I feel also since we're going through the budget, we're looking for redundancies. And to be a part of two chambers at this point is pretty redundant, especially if one of them has already gone above and beyond.
I would just like to, sorry, Mr. Vasquez, for putting you on the spot. But could you share any benefits that you see of being in two chambers from your experience with the city or in prior?
Sorry. We, we do have some interaction with some of Cibolo's small businesses that participate in the Tri-County Chamber. And they've expressed to us that they feel there is value in the organization. But we're, we're going to follow the council's direction, whichever chamber you want us to work with or both of them.
My thought process is we do have businesses in both or in one or the other. I have been to some of the Tri-County mixers. I was at the premier ER event that they had a couple of weeks ago and both chambers were there. So I have seen them out and about. I've seen the effort. I understand the desire to want to cut it completely. I would prefer to drop us down. So instead of cutting it completely, go down to that lowest rung from this $5,000, whatever we're at, to the basic one that's 650, 630, something like that. Go down to it, decrease it, and then next year reevaluate and see if during this year of rebuilding, if we're seeing any return on that investment. Because I think the higher levels, from what I read online, the higher levels just include our logo on swag and stuff. It's not, it's not giving us that much.
The higher ones also include us going to the luncheons, kind of like they do with the chamber as well right now. But if none of us are attending the Tri-County luncheon, what benefit is that necessarily? And if they're charging us to do like their luncheon learns that they do, if we still have to pay for that, well, then that's not really a benefit either. Now, they did express to me that they are going to make a conscious effort to show up in the city. And I do believe that they will because we have one community member that is a very active member of Tri-County. Then actually, one of them came here two weeks ago and, you know, kind of sat in the audience. But he wasn't able to make it tonight. But, I mean, we need, they need to regain our trust, you know? So.
Single council member support the current level or support the current level of membership? I've heard one council member voice, two council members voice, the lower level, which is about 650. I don't know if that's clear enough direction. So if we could go back around the dais and you give me your direction, so if you want to not pay anything, I need to hear that. Or if you're in favor of the lowest.
Not to say, I'm sorry. There's really no renegotiating because all you're doing is bumping down the tier.
There is no negotiation.
Their, their prices are set and firm. So going back to them, it's not renegotiating. And I can, I can appreciate what y'all are trying to do. But at the same time, it's like we're trying to, I'm with Mr. Mahoney. Let them get their business model back to where it needs to be. But since we're so constrained right now, it's not a bad idea to kind of take a step back and then revisit even the $650 even next year.
If I could then, from each voting member of the council, if you could say you want to have no membership in the Tri-County for FY26 or the lowest level of membership, because those are the only two that I heard. We will modify the budget.
We'll start with Joel, lowest or no? What do you mean?
None.
So no, as far as lowest, no? Okay, Donna?
I would like the lowest, but I'd also like to know what that amount is.
Yeah, because online might not be.
Well, because, yeah, online, that's.
I know, I just noticed that.
We have it up on Ms. Miranda's screen.
The lowest level of membership is nonprofit at $100 annually. It includes one representative receiving member benefits and discounts and the business name, phone, and address listed in the directory.
There's one that says government?
There's one that says government. Business community includes schools and government entities, 650 annually. One location, two representatives receive member benefits and discounts. Business name, phone, address, and link to your website is in the directory. Opportunity to put promo items in our ribbon cutting goodie bags, one free ad in our e-blast and social media per year.
Okay, Norma, lowest or no?
No.
Okay, Katie?
The lowest, the 650.
That was 650, the government one.
Katie was low. Okay, Mahoney? No? Okay, how about you, Randy? All right, so it's a three, three tie. I'm going to go lowest.
All right, we will modify the budget from the $5,250 to 650.
Okay.
I also had a question, just a clarification. Norma and I were looking at the, the Public Works Administration budget. And it looks like the CIP manager was converted to a, an assistant director. Is that correct?
That's correct. There was no pay difference. It was merely a title change. And so we, we realigned the duties that were under Mr. Gomez before he was promoted. And we shifted the title when we were advertising to Assistant Public Works Director. So pay grade stayed the same.
Thank you.
I do have a question in regards to that. So do we need to remove or defund the capital improvements manager since it's not being filled and it not being utilized and then bring it back at a later time?
The CIP manager is now the Assistant Public Works Director position, so.
So from that, but it's still listed in the budget?
We will correct the org chart.
It's listed as zero.
It's listed as zero.
It's listed as zero.
But so it shows that that position still exists.
Which is zero. There's no.
It's in there for history so that you could see that it was in there in fiscal '24, but it's a zero for fiscal year '26.
And then over the course of the years, when we are no longer showing that far back, it drops.
Okay, moving on to item eight H.
Actually, we're not, I'm not done with discussion. Yes, worth the budget, yes. I wanted to just kind of, because we are doing budget cuts, right? And I, I don't think as council, we actually explored what the city secretary also sent us as far as our own council budget as well. But I did go back, Ms. Miranda, to one of the last presentations. I think it was back in, on Tuesday, August the 12th. Because I just want to do my due diligence in here. It says that the expenses exceed revenues by $330,000. And I was just going through all those departments to make sure that these reductions were made. And none of them actually added up. And.
I'm sorry, nothing had what?
They didn't add up. So for instance, for, I'll, I'll pick one, let's say the police department. Love, you know, to fund our police department, actually looked at every single department. And I did notice that it says here that there was going to be a reduction of PPE and travel expenses by $46,000. But on the contrary, I noticed that it actually increased by $29,000. But on the contrary, I noticed that it actually increased by twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty. So I was just looking for that, and not, not that I mind that the police department went up. It's just that as I was going through what was expressed, presented to council that these reductions were happening, they just didn't line up. For instance, also reduced PPE and travel expense in fire department by nineteen thousand. I noticed that there was an exception last year regarding some new, what was it, like coats or something that were quite expensive?
For fire?
For fire, so that was an exception.
They have to replace them every so often.
Right, so last year was an exception, but I just noticed that their PPE was the same from two to twenty, twenty-two, as opposed to, well, well, and now. So it was supposed to have been reduced by nineteen thousand. Again, not that I mind that they have the PPE, obviously. What I'm saying is that these reductions that were presented are not actual reductions, so. And apparently, these reductions, I know Councilman Hicks had asked, "How is it that we went from a twenty-three point four reserves to a twenty-seven point seven?" And it was presented because of the reductions that were made. It brought it back up, so I just wanted to.
I think, I think there's a misunderstanding in what you consider reductions. It's not reductions from the prior year, which is what you're looking at in the budget. You're looking at the twenty-five column and the twenty-six column. It's reductions from what they requested this year. So let's, let's just as an example, say Mario requested, he requested sixty thousand in PPE, and we reduced it to forty. So, so it's not a reflection of a reduction from twenty-five, it's a reduction from what he asked for this year. Yeah.
The thing is, though, there, there's no way for council to measure what they requested. There's.
There's a prior iteration of the documents. So I have, for example, budget documents, the raw format budget in Excel as of the date we presented in July, and then when we made reductions, I have a new budget format dated August. Or, you know, every time we made reductions, I have a new iteration in a worksheet, so that you can follow it.
We don't have that information.
Maybe we should, or have y'all put it down on paper, if you're putting it down on paper, saying, "This is reduction in the request that they've made." Instead, I mean, because as council, we don't have that. You have it, we don't. And what we're looking at is last year's, and it doesn't show a reduction. So maybe it'd be in benefit of the staff to put down reduction in what that department requested.
And, and so we could create us, an additional column that is their original requests, and then what the city manager's proposing, right? Fiscal year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-six requested, and then fiscal year twenty-six proposed. So that way you see both columns side by side.
So Ms. Miranda, the budget we gave council early on in June, where we had a twenty-four percent fund reserve at the time, would have showed that original request. So you had the original budget for the general fund that we gave you back in June. If you look at that one compared to the one that the city manager's proposed budget, you'll see the difference. But that's two different documents. We can put it in one document, yes.
Okay, I have another item. I just noticed right across the board, as I was looking for them, I just noticed that there was cost increasing throughout the budget. But I did wanna bring back the twenty-five thousand in Sibolo magazine. Twenty-five thousand is a big chunk of change. I feel that we should probably take a, a break of that this coming year and allow that twenty-five thousand to go back into the general fund and see where it could be utilized. I know last year we cut out the traffic studies, and then shortly after that, we had requests from residents who wanted traffic studies. So I would like to give something back to our residents, and so I feel like that would be well-utilized funds considering that we're increasing this tax rate, but what are the residents getting even in this tax rate? I know that the Budget Town Hall had a lot of what we already voted on last year, but what are, what are we showing them? This is for the fifty-two twenty-six. So anyway, I just wanted to propose that.
And Ms. Sacha Stevens, on the in Sibolo magazine, that was a request to council several years ago. And so we've put it in the budget because it was a council directive. We'll go whichever way the council wants to go. That twenty-four thousand was for two per year, and FY twenty-five, we're only, we've only gotten one out. And so it falls to the bottom line. So the money to get that one out is all that will be expensed. The rest will fall to the bottom line. So the twenty-five thousand or twenty-four thousand is for two additions per year.
Well, that was my suggestion was gonna be if, what's that?
Go ahead. I'm just waiting.
That would be my suggestion. We just did it once a year and gave them information at the beginning of the year after the elections and how, how the elections went, how everything passed. But just do it once a year, and that cut that cost in half.
I'm gonna disagree. We just got the most recent in Sibolo, and I've had a lot of my neighbors and a lot of residents say that they really appreciated it. A lot of people are not online. It feels like everyone's on Facebook or Nextdoor or wherever, but a lot of people are not online. The website, as much improved as it is from the prior website, it's still difficult to find things in there. I think that the visuals in the, in the magazine that we just got were very clear, had a lot of really good information, and it's really more of a reference guide. It's, I saw it morph kind of this time into something that wasn't just a, "Here's some stories about Sibolo," to something that, like, I would actually keep in my kitchen and reference that if I needed it. Shirts did one at the beginning of the summer that listed all of the summer activities, all of the parks that they have. It did a little briefing on all the different parks, all of the summer activities, all the summer camps, the library hours, different things like that. And that, I have, I still have that one, because I looked at it for my kids and was circling which camps I could take them to and all of that. So I think that if we made it into a useful, not just like a magazine where it's little quick things, but more of like a reference guide, I think that would be very useful for people. It would also help us with people who move to Sibolo. They can come in, they're setting up the utilities or whatever. Here, here's some information on Sibolo, and they get that with it. So I am in favor of the mag, the, in Sibolo, I think that it is useful, especially this last one I saw, I was really impressed with. If we could get it cheaper, I would always be thrilled to get it cheaper. But I think going to one after elections is a good time to do it, I think, like the December-ish timeframe. So like after, in the fall and in the spring would be great. But I don't know about going to just one, because then what time of year do you even decide? You do it after the elections, then you're in the holiday season. Nobody is, everyone's getting a million pieces of mail then and getting buried in Amazon boxes, so I don't know. I think that two is, is good, but if we can find a cheaper printer or other options, that'd be good too.
Can I just say one more thing? This last particular one, I just noticed that there were, it was actually sent out even after the Sibolo Summer Nights was posted. It was afterwards, it was time passed. I felt that the, for that, we, last year, we did make a motion to only do one because we were also going to voters to increase the tax rate, so we decided on one. I was looking forward to my one, like I really was. And then it just seemed like, again, just respectfully, right? Because we're looking with a different lens of what do we need to cut? What are, what, what are we great at? What are we not great at? What can we let go of? And, and so I just noticed a lot of it is, it was just the waste management, which I think we, the pamphlets went out, the trash cans went out. And then again, we just kinda rehashed the whole garbage contract all over again, like huge spread. Sibolo Fest got a little tiny spot like this, and I was just thinking, wow, like, how great would it have been if we had pictures of the last Sibolo Fest? And then inviting everyone to come to, it was just a tiny little thing. And then I was going through, looking for, what is, what are some renderings for economic development? What is Sibolo Crossing coming? When is Olive Garden? These are things that could have been incorporated with some visual design to show, because these are the questions that our residents have. What's going in here, there? Andy's Frozen Custard. These, that could have been a good two or three pages showing that. But it, we could also be featuring our, our businesses. Let's talk about our businesses on eleven oh three, which are struggling because of construction. That's, I know that we spotlight them on Facebook to kinda help generate, say, "Hey, we're still here." That would have been a great way, also offering them a piece maybe to contribute to purchase a spot in Sibolo. Things like that. I just feel like we're not really maximizing this opportunity, and it kinda felt more of a cost than a service. And I really was trying to find a lot of good to say, "Let's keep this twenty-five thousand." But at this point, I kinda felt maybe this year until we get more revenues coming in, usually when revenues are low is not the time that you continue to outpour and spend. Especially, we need to show the residents that we're making a good effort and a good attempt in doing so.
Did y'all have any more questions for us?
I'd like every council member to give direction, because I'm hearing two that say, "Don't do it." I need to hear from the whole council.
Okay, well, we don't really have an action. I mean, we're, we're really cutting it close, and so we're gonna maybe ask for direction on one last thing, and we're gonna move on.
So the, I did, this is like way back. When I was in ninth grade, we had to do a project called Travel Texas, and we got the Texas State Travel Guide. The state tech stop puts together this travel guide annually. It's very much just a thick magazine about all things Texas, places you can go, businesses that are in those cities, museums, different events, things like that. If we went to one a year, maybe we do more of an in Sibolo, like, here's our travel guide for Sibolo. Obviously, it's not a huge destination with hotels yet, but it could be more like that. And be, and be like one a year that would be good for the entire year. We aren't putting little time-sensitive things necessarily in there, but we could put our community calendar. We know that Sibolo Fest every year is in October, and those dates are set pretty early. We know when Easter is. We know different things. Those are kind of set up in advance. How to book a room, what rental facilities are available in the city, things like that.
Right, and, and I think if you would like to talk about content, then we could bring back a presentation in October. We could bring that back and then talk about content. I think tonight it's whether or not you wanna fund something.
Okay, so let's, let's ask that question. Do we wanna keep in Sibolo magazines? We'll start with Randy.